We're moving today. I think that we're going to have to constantly evaluate the data that we receive from both glass and composting. We need to evaluate constantly the programs because it's going to be really necessary to make any adjustments that we ensure the program's successful. One of my concerns is how do we get our community to comply with removing glass from the blue barrel and putting it to the side and then taking that extra step to take it to a recycling bin? That concerns me and I just wonder if there is any thought given to the possibility of having like a carrot when people are recycling their glass, that they be given some sort of credit in their bill or et cetera? I don't know how we would do that, but I really am concerned about the diverting glass into the landfill. And so just a thought, you know, there's what are the possibilities of using the carrot and stick approach? The carrot for hey, you're doing great. Thanks for coming to recycle your glass. And then the stick, which is still one of the issues that our recycling program has, is the contamination. And how we, you know, how do we get our community to use our recycling program much better? And I know that we've talked about it previously. Those that are habitual contaminators be given some sort of citation or charged in their bill because they're really ruining it for the rest of us. So those are some concerns if you'd like to talk about it. And then I'd like to invite council member Kozak to speak to this because I know that he's helped shepherd the glass recycling and yeah, get his input on this. Carlos?
So Mayor, members of the council, so one of the things we have our recycling rewards card so we can really be more active about it in terms of really folks really put in the right thing in the right place. We can probably have a few folks out there every once in a while at those collection points and if folks are really are out there dropping off the glass, we can certainly make the distribution. We can probably get creative on special areas that folks either buy glass or use glass to be able to incentivize essentially that program. So we certainly do that, Mayor. And as it relates to the contamination, one of the things we continue to work with the recycling partnership is really that overall audit. And so it's been delayed by COVID that we still are seeing that they're restricted from traveling. At first it was really them coming out here in January to do the audit and helping us with that. And really that was going to help us really tailor our contamination approach and really the education program as well. So that's been delayed. So we have worked out a special arrangement with them that we're going to be contracting their consultant directly and that is going to help us really expedite that audit sooner rather than later. So we're working through that on the contamination. Certainly whatever decision of the council is, we'll essentially take that to heart to make sure that we incorporate that as part of the recycling partnership effort, the audit and the education and the diversion. And obviously, how do we further incentivize the recycling programs? We had this past weekend, we had an event here at Thomas Price Center. We had, we didn't think we were going to get a whole lot of folks. We had over 125 residents that came in and dropped off their recyclables, electronics. We shared some paper. So we're going to continue to have those type of outreach events and during those events, we'll deploy the glass crusher, we'll identify really what the benefit is of what is the end product of crushing glass and how we're going to use that. So really begin to showcase really that we're trying to institute more programs that have more of a local benefit, more of a local control and that we can actually touch and feel. What we're seeing today, if we said what happens recyclables, well, there's no connection because that glass ends up going all the way to Mexicali and we really don't have a sense of what that means. But if we all of a sudden, we know that if I put those bottles in a place that I can basically end a monsoon soup comes around, that essentially that some of those sandbags are going to be filled with that glass that we're reusing. So that's just one of the examples that I think over time we're going to have to be out there constantly and to continue to provide that message, to continue to reinforce the benefits and that essentially we're trying to really make a dent overall locally.
Go ahead, council member Kozak.
So I'm just going to be real here, just follow Carlos's talking. I just got a text and just goes back to our COVID thing. One of the contractors that we all know and Rahina, you and Elaine have worked with under Concord passed away from COVID today. And it is really just sucks. People in this community who are not wearing masks, who are pretending this is a farce. I'm just not really sure how to phrase it other than it's family friendly. I'll share the name with you guys offline. Thank you for bringing this back. Carlos, you've done a really good job of outlining the program. You probably saved my marriage by moving if we move this forward, by getting me out of this garage here at night. I wish there were a way we could do this before February 1st. But yeah, I think that you've really done a good job of outlining the benefits. The community is all over it. After I'm done speaking, I'll walk back and take a chance that in the time we've been here, I'm going to, I'll take a picture and text it to the mayor and so she can see that what has happened while we're sitting here. Seven days a week, multiple times a day, people are dropping glass off. So they will buy into this and it's the education thing. And I agree with the notion that if people are going to continue to contaminate, then they may not need to be a part of the whole recycle program because it's costing us money and it's hurting the people who are doing it right, as the mayor said. So I'm totally supportive of this and I appreciate the work that you've done, Carlos, in now putting the details together. So anyway, that's all I've got. If you need a motion, I'd move that we move this forward as presented with your comments, Mayor, about it being attached to the climate action plan.
Yeah, and I want to make sure that we also put in there the constant evaluation of the data, council member Kozak, because we have to be able to be nimble and move fast and respond to adjust and to the needs of what we're seeing. So let me see. Councilwoman Lee.
I just wanted to second that motion and just also reiterate the value in being open to the different options. Councilmember Kozak and I have been doing some research and looking at some other potential options too and potential partnerships that we want to bring back to you all for potential consideration in the future. So we're continuing to iterate on different ideas. So I just wanted to second that and also plant the seed that there are some potential exciting things that we want to bring forward on this topic in the future.
Any additional comment? All righty, with that, there is a motion and a second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nice job, Carlos.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Carlos. Thank you for bringing your detailed plans.
Thank you, Mayor.
Item six, time has been set aside for an update on temporary measures marijuana dispensaries can take to address COVID-related issues. Mr. Manager.
Mayor, I'd like to turn it over to Director Scott Clark. This is kind of a double-pronged approach here. One is temporary opportunity for us to address this issue, but also start the process for a more permanent discussion. So with that, Scott? Anybody from planning available?
He's listed as being on.
I can see that you're on, Scott, but I'm not sure if you're in there or not.
This is Corinne. I know Scott was having some technical difficulties earlier today. He might still be trying to work those out, so I'm happy to step in.
Yeah, why don't you do that, Corinne, if you don't mind? So Corinne Manning is one of our key people over at Planning Development Services. So Corinne, if you don't mind, go ahead and take it.
Sure, sure. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for having us here today. As the city manager mentioned, there's kind of two items that we want to discuss. One is the temporary measures to help existing medical marijuana dispensaries deal with some of the effects of the pandemic in terms of allowing for greater social distancing for their customers. We shared some recommendations a few weeks ago on a few temporary measures that could be put in place to allow dispensaries to deal with some of these issues, including allowing dispensaries to expand their lobby and waiting area somewhat if they have space to expand on a temporary basis. And secondly, to allow dispensaries that have an existing drive-through to use those to allow, again, just for more social distancing for their customers, they don't have to come into the store to pick up their products. And then the second thing we want to discuss is just an update on our permanent changes to the code or long-term changes to the Unified Development Code regarding dispensaries, given that Proposition 207 was approved by voters of Arizona in the recent election. And that will allow for adult-use marijuana dispensaries to begin receiving licenses as of April 5th, 2021. So we'd like to put in place local regulations to allow those dispensaries in our community and have those in place by that timeframe in April. So with that, I'm actually going to ask Dan, who's also on the line, Daniel Bersik, to share a little bit more in terms of the updates on Prop 207.
So let me give you a couple more items. I'm sorry, it wouldn't let me unmute. So anyway, just real quick, on the temporary measures you asked us to look at, we produced a off-agenda memo dated October 23rd. And in summary, you asked us to look at curbside pickup and delivery, home delivery, expansion of lobby, and temporary utilization of a drive-through. So the curbside pickup delivery and home delivery are already permissible by code, so council does not need to take any additional action there. On the expansion of the sales lobby, that can be authorized. And also the temporary utilization of existing drive-through, keep in mind, there's only one that has a drive-through, could also be authorized by council by simply advising staff not to enforce those two existing regulations while the new regulations are being drafted. So you have that option to make a motion on today to allow us to continue that. And then we'll get into the initiation of the amendments for the Unified Development Code.
Madam Mayor, I would like to make that motion what Scott just mentioned to give more leeway because of the COVID things and people allowing to drive up to get the prescriptions and things happening, I think it's more appropriate for us to err on the side of caution than to err not to. So I'd support the motion, make the motion that we do that.
I'll go ahead and second it, Madam Mayor. I think that again, as long as we're being careful about and responsible about how we phase in the adult use provisions within our existing medical use provisions, I think we're going to see a win for the city on this one. And I think that Director Clark has been really proactive in trying to get us on the right track.
All righty, so there is a motion and a second. Any continued discussion? Hearing none?
Yeah.
Steve, go ahead. Sorry.
I may be remembering this wrong, Scott, but weren't there also a couple of pieces that we have to, that we have to, that can only be done through emergency proclamation through the mayor's office?
In consultation with the city attorney's office, I was informed that Mayor and Council making a motion recommending that staff not enforce these provisions would suffice for the interim.
Okay, fine.
So it would be pretty much the same thing, giving the direction not to enforce? Mike, you have your hand up.
Thank you, Mayor, and Councilmember Kozak asking the question. Yes, I got with Scott earlier and confirmed what he just said, that these types of temporary relief in terms of the enforcement and by PDSD, I think you can accomplish by motion and they don't need to be built into a proclamation. It could be accomplished through a proclamation, but I don't think that's needed here.
Okay. You know, I just want to make sure that we, in this time of COVID-19, and social distancing is required in terms of lobby space, we have to remember exposure doesn't just happen to patients who are waiting in lobbies, but also to staff and others on the sales floor areas where there's more interaction with others. So addressing unutilized lobby space without considering the areas where transactions are taking place doesn't accomplish the goals of protecting everyone. Are there, are there any possible movement that we could do? So for example, the back of the, there's the front of the business and the back of the business. Does this particular temporary solution address the back of the house? In other words, provide space for workers?
Honorable Mayor and Council, thank you for that question. So this would be a temporary expansion, nonstructural in nature, and it would be reviewed for health and safety issues such as ventilation, fire exit, height, steps, so the usual routine for looking at a new building. We can ensure that they provide the setbacks necessary that we're talking about during COVID as part of this review process, and we would be issuing a C of O that they would enforce that.
Would this address the, I'm sorry, would this address the issue of back of the house, extra space that you need? You know how you have to, I mean, people, both workers and patients need to be safe during COVID-19. So would this address the back of the house needs in terms of space for workers as well if dispensary owners were to want to expand the back of the house?
So the current code has dispensary sizes limited to 4,000 square feet. So if they want to expand their lobby, they could potentially expand it up to 3,000 square feet, 3,500 square feet. But under the current code, and actually I could not allow them to go bigger without a public process because now you're making a change to the structure. So it's not going to address the back of the house, so to speak, but the measures that they're already doing as far as maintaining their own social distance, wearing masks and staying home. If they're using those now, those should be appropriate for their operations until we get the new regulations in place.
All righty, because I mean, I support the measures that we have in front of us today, but my question still stands in that in order to expand the lobby and in order to be able to keep workers healthy as well, I just wonder if there are any other temporary measures to be able to give that space to workers that are working in the back of the house as well, not just the lobbies and the sales?
So not that I'm aware of. What we can do is reach out to Pima County Health and see if they have any additional best management practices they'd like to look at. But ideally, we're not going to want to compress people into a space that's going to require them to be greater than, or less than six feet apart. So that's the best answer I can give you.
Okay. All righty. Do we have a motion on the floor?
Madam Mayor, I made the motion and I believe Vice Mayor made the second. And I think we're just going to need to call for the question. But I also wanted to, Scott, to make sure you talked, I see what Phoenix, the city of Phoenix is doing, maybe we can look at what they're doing and take some ideas from them and also utilize those down here.
Sure, sure.
So in other words, council member Rafim is expanding?
Just looking at their policies and what they're doing to allow for some of these expansions.
Okay, okay, perfect. So let's make sure that we bring those options back, Scott. We should be very comparative, very close to what Phoenix is doing in terms of how they run their programs.
Okay.
All righty, so there's a motion and a second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Scott.
All right. I got one more slide for you. I need you, now this is the more permanent. So in order to get the Unified Development Code amended to allow for the more permanent rules, and I think this is Mayor Romero where you're probably going, is that currently Tucson limits the size of a dispensary to 4,000 square feet. Other jurisdictions within the state do not have such a size limitation. So as we do the more permanent regulations that we'll be bringing back to you for your consideration in April, that's where we can expand these facilities. So since you're already out of your time, what I need from Mayor and Council on this one is to initiate the amendment process for the Unified Development Code for the permanent amendments to the UDC to support Proposition 207.
So moved, Your Honor? And after the second, I have discussion.
All right.
Second, I'll second the UDC for the Prop 207. Yes, sir.
So there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion, Vice Mayor?
Yes, Your Honor. Look, this is pretty simple stuff on this one. We've got to keep up with the times, but the other thing is, is that that square footage, that square footage limit that we put in kind of cost us, not on purpose. And then we adjusted it on the secondary growth sites, but we can probably look at what some of the other cities are doing and at least be in line with them as far as expanding. Look, Gilbert and Chandler have like, they're very, very prohibitive, but Flagstaff and Phoenix are a little more progressive. I think there's a happy medium there for our neighbors in our city and I hope Scott is able to bring that back. And Scott, when you do bring that back as part of this motion, I wanted just to direct you that when you do bring this back, show us what some of the other towns in Arizona are doing, because I want to have a good idea on, you know, kind of how we measure up. But I'd really like to be, I'd like to be front runners on this. This is an economic opportunity we can't pass up.
Yeah, no, this is exactly, Scott, what I was referring to in terms of square footage here in the city of Tucson versus other jurisdictions, and we're pretty much the only ones. Councilwoman Lee?
Thank you, Mayor. Just kind of echoing what my colleagues have already said, a couple of weeks ago, I did tour, I was invited to a dispensary and they are bursting at the seams. They have production in the back, Mayor, as you were saying, where they have chefs and they're almost on top of each other and they have a lobby space and then they have the retail aspect. And with COVID, the parking lot was full because they're keeping people spaced out. So it's a real challenge right now. But in learning, as you were talking about the size of the buildings, some of the feedback I got is that people would like to see, you know, different size limitations for production compared to lobby, compared to retail, so that they can expand their kitchens. Also, as Vice Mayor was saying, it really is an economic issue because I learned that if we can't get it together in Tucson, the jobs of making the products are going to happen in a city where they have those capabilities. So it's definitely important for me that we figure out how to do that. And also engaging, you know, with the full scope of stakeholders in this process, I think is going to be really important because everyone has kind of different concerns, including different members of the community. So I think that would be really valuable in moving forward with this ordinance for the city.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any others? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Scott. Thank you, Corinne. And I think you're going to stay with us, right?
Honorable Mayor and Council, I'm going to stay with you. And then actually, Corinne Manning, who is the much smarter person here, will talk about this primarily. So let me just give you a little bit of...
Item seven, time has been set aside for the discussion of a potential amendment to the UDC to allow accessory dwelling units. Mr. Manager, should we just throw it back to Corinne?
Yeah, just...
Go ahead, Corinne.
Absolutely. All righty. So Corinne Manning is going to bring up a presentation for you. It's about six slides. We are asking you to initiate a process to amendify the UDC to authorize accessory dwelling units. You heard earlier today, we have an affordable housing issue in Tucson, and we're also looking at demographic issues with seniors wanting to stay close to home and their families wanting to keep there, and also college students that have mini cases are staying home. So with that, Corinne Manning is the City's Planning Administrator. She's been closely collaborating with HCD. She's our subject matter expert, so she's going to take you through a brief presentation. Corinne?
Great. I trust everyone can see my slides. So I want to start just by talking about what an accessory dwelling unit is. Many of you may be familiar with this concept, but essentially, an accessory dwelling unit is an independent housing unit with its own kitchen, bathroom, living, sleeping space. And it is called accessory because it is meant to be accessory to a primary residence. These units are usually smaller than the primary residence, typically under 1,000 square feet, often much smaller than that, 500 to 600 square feet is very typical. And there's a few different forms that these units can take. Kind of a classic example is the casita, separate from the main home. That's kind of the detached typology that you see in this image here. But an ADU can also be attached to the main residence. In some cases, it's even a rehab, a retrofit, by taking existing space inside a home and turning that into a separate dwelling unit, converting a basement, attic, garage, a space like that, into its own unit. So we see a lot of, for example, garage conversions like that in Tucson. These units are often what we refer to colloquially as casitas or granny flats, mother-in-law units, things like that. But in terms of our technical speak and planning, we refer to these as accessory dwelling units or ADUs. And many communities across the country have been adopting regulations to allow these accessory dwelling units because they have many benefits in terms of dealing with or creating more opportunities for affordable housing, which is an issue not just in Tucson, but across the country. So these units are a way to increase the supply of affordable rental housing, encourage more flexible housing options for seniors, support multi-generational households who might need more flexible living arrangements, provide supplemental income to landowners, property owners, and promote stability within neighborhoods. And of course, support more climate resilient infill development that is in context with And this policy is also a way to support a lot of the existing policy and planning priorities of Mayor and Council, and that's really our reason for bringing this to Mayor and Council today. So earlier, we heard from Dr. Alicia Kim about, with an update on our affordable housing study, or housing study. And one of the findings is that our city does have many renters especially, but also property owners who are housing cost burden, meaning they're spending over 30% of their household income on housing costs. So over half of our renter households and over 22% of homeowners in Tucson are housing cost burdened. And we also have some initial findings from the third phase of the study, the gap analysis, which shows that over a quarter of our senior households are considered extremely or very low income. So this points to a real need for more affordable housing across the city. And these ADUs are one way to achieve some of those goals. These units are often less costly to rent than larger apartments. And just by creating this new option, it adds the overall supply of housing across the city. Accessory dwelling units are also a strategy that was identified as part of the Thrive in the '05 study in the Oracle area as a way to support more affordable housing. as a way to support more affordable housing options specifically in that neighborhood while supporting multi-generational households. Additionally, this strategy supports a lot of the concerns by Mayor and Council in establishing the Commission on Equitable Housing and Development. This commission will be advising Mayor and Council on how we can increase investment in housing in our community, how to preserve affordable housing, and how to protect burrows and neighborhoods that are experiencing rapid change. So this policy is, or this potential policy of allowing accessory dwelling units is one potential strategy for addressing some of these issues. And the Commission on Equitable Housing and Development would be a really important voice as we formulate this policy. And then, of course, earlier this year, Mayor and Council adopted a climate emergency declaration calling for carbon neutrality by 2030 and the development of a climate action plan. We see that ADUs can be an important tool to support residential infill development that makes efficient use of our land as a city and also efficient use of our existing infrastructure. ADUs are also typically very energy efficient structures based on their smaller footprint and construction methods. So this is a way to support many of these policy goals, including the Age Friendly Tucson Action Plan. This was adopted by Mayor and Council in May of last year and called on the city to provide more affordable housing options for seniors and older adults and facilitate ways for older adults to age in place, which is another, another important goal that ADUs can help us achieve by giving property owners the option to move into a smaller unit on their own property or stay in that unit and have a caregiver move onto their property with them. So how are accessory dwelling units regulated today in Tucson? Accessory dwelling unit is actually not a defined term in the Unified Development Code, which is our zoning code as a city. And in fact, we do have regulations regarding accessory structures. However, the code specifically states that accessory buildings shall not be considered a dwelling unit, meaning they should not be a independent unit with its own kitchen and other rooms. It's really meant to be just an extension of the primary residence when you have a casita or guest quarters on most properties. In some districts, you can do more than one dwelling unit on a site. So you could have two units, a duplex, for example, or two homes. That has allowed some people to do accessory dwelling units. However, that typically requires a larger lot size than is standard. And in most of our zoning districts, the regulations just make it very difficult to develop a second unit. So in developing new code to allow accessory dwelling units, we would be looking at some of those issues that have been barriers and developing criteria that work for the needs of our neighborhoods in Tucson. So we would be looking at areas such as the appropriate type of ADUs to allow, the appropriate size, density, lot size requirements, potential changes to some of our dimensional standards such as height, lot coverage setbacks, parking requirements, and would also make sure that any changes to the zoning code also align with our building and fire codes and are aligned with our existing standards regarding group dwellings, home occupations, and historic districts. Another thing that we will look at is the potential to create an amnesty program for existing ADUs across the city. We know that there's many casitas and second units that really do function more like an accessory dwelling unit that are fully independent but have not been permitted over time. So there's potential to create sort of an amnesty period and incentive for property owners to get those fully permitted and up to code. We are hoping to do very extensive public outreach for this, this proposed code amendment. We would like to develop a stakeholder group of local experts, practitioners, community advocates that can help advise us as we're formulating this policy. And then also hold a series of public meetings to present a proposal and get feedback from the community. So we're thinking of a series of public meetings and smaller stakeholder groups over the next several months so that we can have a policy proposal to bring to the Commission on Equitable Housing and Development and then also the Planning Commission by late spring, April and May of next year, and then a proposed code amendment to bring back to Mayor and Council in June of 2021. So in summary, we respectfully request that Mayor and Council initiate a amendment to the Unified Development Code to define and permit accessory dwelling units, identify zones where they are appropriate, and then create development standards regulating unit size, minimum lot size, lot coverage setbacks, parking requirements, and other aspects. Thank you.
Thank you, Corinne. I appreciate you all bringing this conversation. I, you know, I've been on the council long enough to remember that we started talking about this conversation about accessory dwelling units. What was it, Scott? Maybe about four years ago?
At least four, Your Honor.
At least four years ago, maybe five or six. And so the idea of an accessory dwelling unit for the reasons and the, and the, um, the pros that you brought to us, right? The, the, uh, the, all the benefits of having accessory dwelling units for intergenerational households, for being able to have nanny unit or be able to even have the owners of the, um, of the residence have their students, you know, going to college, live in the, in, in the accessory dwelling unit. Even with the idea of renting that space for additional income to be able to, um, you know, to, uh, bring in additional income to the, to the household. I think that if we're really going to talk about affordable housing in this community seriously, we have to look closely at our residential codes. For far too long, we have been living with suburban codes in this city. And that really, um, that really is a detriment to infill development, to affordable housing. And it's, it's also a detriment to density. And so I really want us to take a look at why is it that we're having a conversation about accessory dwelling units? And what, uh, being able to reimagine our codes, reimagine how we look at sustainability, sustainability and density in our city. So I'm glad that you bring this to us today, Scott. I think that creating opportunities for more affordable housing through change in residential codes and reimagining how we do things, right? Many times, we're so used to doing something a certain way that we cheat ourselves out of, um, reimagining how we do things. And so I, I think this is a step in, in an appropriate direction. It, um, it aligns with sustainability practices and density practices. And, and so in many different ways, it, it connects, as Corinne mentioned in her presentation, it connects to climate action and adaptation. This is the adaptation piece that, that we have to really get good at. So thank you for bringing this item to us. And I know that there are several hands up. Councilmember Santa Cruz, and then I believe the Vice Mayor have their hands up. I don't see if Councilmember Fimbras, but let's start with Councilmember Santa Cruz and then the Vice.
Oh, I can go last because I think I saw Vice Mayor and then Fimbras go up first.
Vice Mayor and then Councilmember Fimbras.
All right. So Scott, we've kind of talked about this over the last, this really came into focus during the impact fee discussion. And, and we've had two things, so I wanna, I kinda wanna give you your jumping off point here. One, um, it's not a one-size-fits-all on the size of the ADU. It's, it's gotta be proportional to the lot. So in other words, if you've got somebody who's got a quarter acre, they got 16, 17,000 square feet, and they've got a 2,000 foot square, square foot structure as their primary home, they'd have a certain limited of size. But if they have 15, same size lot, 1,500, they'd have a different limit. In other words, you've gotta have some type of formula based on the amount of open space of the lot and based on the total size of the lot with setbacks to the neighbors. That's the first thing. The second thing is, these have to have a totally separate, um, uh, impact fee schedule. It's not fair to squeeze a, a, a multi-generational family. You know, look, I'm the king of wanting to collect extra impact fees. So when I'm saying impact fees are too high, you know, you better look. So on these, obviously, this is not, if you wanna build a little casita for your college student and then ultimately move in there when your college student moves into your house, hey, man, that's what America's all about. So we've gotta be able to facilitate that without sticking it to people. So that's my second piece that I want you to consider is having a totally separate impact fee schedule for these ADUs. Third thing, and this is probably the most important, historical zones. Anybody who wants to build an ADU in a historical zone has to go through, uh, the review committee in that historical zone. They have to get it approved. That's the third step in these ADUs because I know for a fact, the second we, we start doing this in Jefferson Park, we're gonna have people calling mini-dorms out because some people are gonna try to sidestep it and do mini-dorms again. And then we'll be right down the same mess we were in the 2000s. So just, I don't want people to, as usual, there's always somebody who takes care of a, takes advantage of a good situation. We want to avoid that. So those are my three kind of marching orders or jumping off points for you where, you know, uh, obviously, Kazachik, Steve, Councilmember Ward Six is gonna have a much better kind of impact on some of this. This is in his wheelhouse, but I know that I'm, I'm hoping that he's thinking somewhat the same thing that I am in that we wanna have those three things considered as we develop this policy. So that's my, that's it for me. Uh, thank you for my time, Your Honor.
Thank you. Good points, Vice Mayor. Uh, Councilmember Fimbras?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've seen the growth of student housing in San Antonio and Miles. They've gone south of, of Broadway, and they've created such a havoc, especially with the coronavirus right now. These folks don't mask, they don't social distance, it's like animal house. And there's lots of problems, especially for the seniors in there. So this is troubling. Just look at this and that here. And I wanna know what kind of assurances and what kind of enforcement we're gonna have before we allow this, because I know they skirted the rules on several of these already. They leave a wall up in place and they, they call it a, a dwelling that they're gonna put a family in. It's not. It's a student dormitory. So those are problems that I see what's going on. I want to understand what the enforcement component's gonna be, what restrictions we can allow. And I think case by case basis, especially in the MPZ areas, where we have a lot of historical neighborhoods that have lived there for all their time, and now they wanna put some infill in there and it's allowing some people that just don't care. They're, they're charging 1,200 bucks a room. So what is the timeframe on the PDSD proposed for review of this subject? And how do the MPZs enter into the discussion? And what role do neighbors or neighborhood association agents have on this?
So, Honorable Mayor and Council, you're looking at us coming back to you for an adoption probably about June 2021, so next year in June. So in the neighborhood association process, they'd be encouraged to participate in the public outreach of this. So solicit their input, help shape the design standards for this. And the design standards are kind of the key here because where you get into student housing is you see four or more bedrooms are being sublet out to individuals that are not related to each other. Most ADUs, the design standard you're looking at is one or two bedrooms max. So that's gonna be prohibitive to student housing off, off the bat. The other aspect, if we do determine that we've got student housing going on, we can do the current red tag program. Of course, during the public process, we'll, like, you know, I see Steve nodding. It's not that effective. We'll continue to solicit input on how best we can go about this. But the key to success is getting the input from the MPZs, from the HPCs, creating a design standard that is essentially prohibited to student housing because you're not gonna make any money on it. And then, uh, other means is we discover them during the review process of other jurisdictions. So I, as Paul mentioned, as, as Councilman Cunningham mentioned, people are gonna cheat every now and then, and that's gonna happen with this. We know that will occur. But I think you're going to see a much better outcome here with the design standards with just one or two bedroom.
So I need to look at steps of what, what a resident, what a neighbor can say when they see these things happening. And what assurances do we have that the ADUs will not be used as student housing?
Okay.
That's what I wanna do, because I see it right now, Scott. I talk to residents and they show me all the time. These people, this was their Nana's house, and now it's student housing.
Okay. All right. So I'll have to get back to you on the full measures that we look at because I don't have all of that yet. But when we come and do a check-in with you on this project, we'll bring that up at that time and get your input again.
Okay. That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember, uh, Councilmember Santa Cruz?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, you know, similar sentiments is what you shared earlier about how this has been, you know, ongoing conversation. And I'm glad that it's finally coming before Mayor and Council to get it started. We've been working with Councilmember Durham's office, and we put a memo together, also kind of listing out some, requesting some feedback on some of the questions with some of the comments that folks have made here tonight. So with that, I, I have a motion that I hope that Mayor and Council would consider. I move that Mayor and Council initiate an amendment to the Unified Development Code, which would define and permit accessory dwelling units, identify the zones where they are appropriate, and create development standards regulating unit size, high minimum lot size, maximum lot coverage, parking requirements, and other relevant aspects in order to promote this accessible and attainable housing option in a manner that is compatible with existing neighborhoods. I also move that Planning and Development Services begin public outreach on this amendment, inclusive outreach, to hear from a variety of constituents, which will include often overlooked communities such as communities of color, low-income communities, renters, homeowners, and other stakeholders on this proposal. And then please return to Mayor and Council with the proposed amendment by June 2021.
Sorry.
So there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I do see Councilmember Kazachik's hand up.
Lane, were you through? Lane, Lane, are you through?
Um, yeah, I'm done.
Okay. So the reality is people are already retrofitting garages into ADUs. And, um, you know, they are very important for multi-generational needs. Also given away for senior stage in place, as both the Mayor and Councilwoman Santa Cruz said. There also have a place for caregivers to stay. So that, for, for those reasons, I think that the notion of an amnesty period is important as long as we're being sure that life safety codes are not being, you know, short circuited. Because a lot of these things have been done kind of under the radar screen. And so we'd need to be sending an inspector to make sure that they've got the, you know, the, the life safety issues under control. With respect to the stakeholders in the study, nearly all of the neighborhoods surrounding the university and even within a couple mile radius are like 80% rentals. And we've seen the secondary structures and housing being built in the way to facilitate more student housing, as, as Richard just said. So consistent with the motion and Scott, with what you just said, I'll be giving you names of residents who live in those areas so they can take part. Possibly consider, and I know this is, these are the kinds of things that will come out of the process, but possibly consider making one of the conditions, at least one of the, uh, one of the units be owner occupied, uh, so that they've gotta live on the site with whatever they produce. I know Clovis, California, they have, their, their analog to our PDSD department has put together construction documents, and they've got three different, um, three different, um, designs that they will give the, they will give the builder the document for free, saving them $10,000, $12,000 if they will build to those standards. And to Paul's point, they're, they're fitted to the lot. They're, um, they're activating alley spaces that right now are just issues for neighborhoods. And so that's something you might wanna also consider. And I've, I've got a link to that Clovis thing if anybody's interested. Um, and so that's something you might want to also consider, and I've, I've got a link to that Clovis thing if anybody's interested in it. It's a pretty cool 20-minute video. Um, question perhaps from Mike Rankin, um, where we're present, we're prevented, say it, Steve, we're preempted by state law. Um, are there way, in, in terms of the short-term rentals, are there ways that we could include language to protect against these just being turned into weekend party houses? And similarly, how would we assure that they don't simply turn into commercial uses? I know that there are some neighborhoods, um, in fact, they used to be, uh, Ward, um, Ward Two neighborhoods now that, uh, that after the last redistrict and they moved in mine into Ward Six, where they have some large, single-family residences that are being turned into assisted living facilities. They've got six or eight rooms and their, their businesses being, being run in, in residential neighborhoods. So how we can make sure we're preemptively dealing with that where the landowner now is living in the little ADU and using the other residents as a business? So those are some things that, that, you know, they, they currently lack guidelines, but there are things that the stakeholder groups are gonna have to be looking at so that we can make sure that we're doing this right. And as everybody who has already spoken has indicated, that's make sure we're not creating collateral damage. But, but doing the right thing for the right reasons. I mean, caregiver homes are just hugely important. We saw the demographics earlier. And, uh, and Mayor pointed out, you know, the baby boom is that, that lump of the bell curve is moving, moving to the right. And, uh, so we're gonna need more and more of these. But without ruining quality of life issues and, and, you know, somebody mentioned, I think it was part of, uh, part of Lane's motion, the parking issues. You know, again, so there are a lot of movement pieces to this. Conceptually, it's great. The deep, the devil's gonna be in the details.
So there's a, a motion and a second. And, uh, Scott and Corinne, you got the, uh, feedback from our colleagues on the council. It is, um, it, it is, uh, lots of parts from your speech, but a good direction to move on. Any additional discussion before we take a vote? All right. All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you so much, Scott. Really appreciate it. Thank you, Corinne.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Alrighty, we're moving on to item eight. Time has been set aside for discussion of the redistricting advisory committee's recommendation. Before I pass it on to Mr., uh, Clerk, I just want to, um, uh, make sure that you're all aware that this item, um, is for discussion and has been atomized for discussion purposes only, nor formal action uh, needs to be taken tonight. This will allow us to continue to engage our community, to solicit their feedback. We have until the end of the year to make a final decision on this item. And I also want to note that these are merely recommendations made by a citizen-led advisory committee that Mayor and Council can approve as-is, either, either option, we have A or B. We can amend the options or change altogether should, should we desire. So with that, I want to allow our city clerk to, uh, to explain to us what we have in front of us in terms of redistricting.
Thank you, Your Honor, and the members of the council. Uh, I'll just kind of give you a brief review of, uh, the redistricting advisory committee. Uh, the redistricting advisory committee was actually created by Public Initiative in 1993. And the responsibilities of this committee are to review the relevance US Census data and to advise the mayor and council on, uh, the redistricting city ward boundaries. Uh, the committee meets every four years, and during the second year following a decennial census. The last population review was completed in 2018, at which point the committee recommended no changes to the ward boundaries of the city. The current ward boundaries is defined by, uh, the mayor and council action took place on November 5th of 2014. Um, this was the precincts that were re-precincted by Pima County. They are responsible for establishing the precincts, and then the redistricting advisory committee makes the recommendation on the ward boundaries to the mayor and council. So the charter is pretty specific about the requirements of the committee. Uh, they have to develop a plan that neither favors or disfavors any political party, any person, and that it doesn't dilute the voting strength of any racial or ethnic minority group. So those are the things that this committee looks at. Additionally, the, uh, wards that, uh, the committee comes up with shall be contiguous and compact to the extent possible. And a key factor is that they should be as close as possible in equal population. And to determine that, it's measured by a concept of what's called maximum population deviation. And what you do with the maximum population deviation is you divide the total population of the city by the six wards. That gives you your ideal population for each ward. Then you look at the actual population within the ward, and the percentage of persons over or under the target population in each ward is the MPD. The, uh, United States Supreme Court has determined that a maximum population deviation of approximately 10% is a justifiable deviation. Uh, the city has always been well up with, under that, but with, uh, the fact that we haven't done any redistricting in a, in a number of years now, our current MPD is at 11.88%. So to fall under that 10%, we really do need to make a change this year uh, to the ward boundaries of the city to bring our population back into a, an acceptable MPD. So that was what the, uh, committee looked at, and they reviewed, uh, a variety of different aspects of the population and maps and, uh, considered a number of different moves. And at the end of the, uh, their review, they held a public hearing to accept public comment. And then they made a motion to move forward two recommended options to Mayor and Council. So I'll just kind of briefly highlight those and, uh, then open it up to you for comment. Option A, that the committee recommended to Mayor and Council, uh, will move three precincts. It will move precinct 37 from Ward One into Ward Three. It would move precinct 89 from Ward Three to Ward Six. And it would move precinct 160 from Ward Five to Ward One. Option B will move one precinct. It will move precinct 98 from Ward Five to Ward Six. So looking at both of these, they both options meet all of the definitions that, uh, we're looking for within, uh, the redistricting process. They do not disrupt the boundaries of any neighborhood associations. They do not dilute the voting strength of the Hispanic population or any minority population as a whole. Uh, they do redistribute the population amongst the wards so that we fall under the proper deviation. Um, option A brings the deviation down to a 5.02% from the 11.88. And option B brings the MPD down to 4.72%. So they both accomplish that. Uh, option A does move 12,096 voters within the wards. Option B moves 4,960 voters. Option B does take and combines a split precinct, so 98 is a precinct that is split between two wards, that is split between Ward Five and Ward Six, so it moves all of that precinct into Ward Six. Uh, each of these also maintain a relatively stable minority population density within each of the wards. So, uh, either one of these options will, uh, keep the city in good standing with the United States Supreme Court ruling on MPD. It will, uh, meet the, uh, requirements of the charter, and it will move the, uh, city forward and to the future. The next redistricting advisory committee will occur in two years. Since we're at the census point, in two years, we will, uh, go back to another redistricting advisory committee, and they will use the 2020 census data to revise the redistrict, the, uh, ward boundaries of the city. We would expect that between now and that redistricting committee, the Pima County will re-precinct as well. So the committee in 2022 is going to have a very large job on their hands to, to make sure that the boundaries of the city are fine. So this is, this is a much simpler process this year. It's just, we're making, we're recommending simple moves. The committees make, recommending simple moves just to get us to a good MPD, and then looking forward to the 2022 redistricting.
Uh, Roger, can you, what was option A one more time? With precincts, were you talking about moving? Sorry.
No, so option A moves precinct 37 from Ward One into Ward Three. Precinct 89 from Ward Three to Ward Six. And precinct 160 from Ward Five to Ward One.
160 or?
160, yes.
From Ward Five?
Yes.
And then Ward Five gives precincts nine, six to 98? Are you precinct 98 to Ward Six?
The option B would be 98 to Ward Six.
And both options accomplish the diversity and opportunities for fair representation in the city?
Yes.
And I think both options, right? And, and like I said before, I want to just make sure that we're all looking at these as recommendations to Mayor and Council, that Mayor and Council can approve as-is, or in our discussions amend, um, and, or change our, uh, these options altogether, should you desire. Um, I, I wanted to start the conversation with, um, talking about the demographics of the city of Tucson. And how do we accomplish fair representation to, um, uh, for the residents of the city of Tucson? What we know today, according to the 2018 American Community Survey, Hispanic or Latino, uh, population is 45.79% of the population in Tucson. I, I, I was still at 43. That must have been two years, two years ago or more. But it's 46% of the population. Um, white, non-Latino is 41.72. African-American is 6.86% of the population. American Indian, Alaskan Native, um, is 3.58. Asian is 3%. And the reason I, I start with the, with the demographics of our city is because, um, uh, you know, it, what we've seen throughout the decades is that two particular wards in the city of Tucson have been increasing, increasingly higher concentration of Latino communities. That's Ward One and Ward Five. Ward One has 75% Latino community, and Ward Five has 71%. It's important to have minority, uh, majority-minority wards. But we need to make sure that this balance is, um, against the perception that we are packing Latino residents into two wards. Latinos represent 46% of the population in the city of Tucson, yet have two out of six wards represented on the council. Um, this has the potential effect of diluting the electoral strength of Latinos, um, in the city of Tucson. So, uh, the Supreme Court, to address this concern, um, has established a principle of rough proportionality. That is, the opportunity to exercise electoral control in a number of districts that roughly correspond to the voting block share of the relevant population. In other words, um, Latinos hold traditionally have, have held two wards out of six versus, um, non-Hispanic whites hold four out of six, but yet are 42% of the population. Um, so the reason I like one of the options, and I, and I, you know, I, I want to make sure that everyone feels comfortable. This is a very important decision. Uh, the reason I like the first option is because in Ward Three, we have, um, 41% of the population in Ward Three are Hispanic. Uh, but yet that particular ward has historically not have a Latino represent that ward. And so for me, representation matters, and being able to take the small steps as a mayor and council to reach fair representation, uh, and be able to give the opportunity to someone that could potentially represent that particular ward, um, as an increasingly Latino ward, is very, very important to me. And so, um, the extra steps that we can take with the first option in front of us is well worth the effort because we are going to see an election in the next two years. Um, hopefully, you know, the representation that we have there is there. But we really do need to take a step this year so that we can set, um, and comply with the growing population in Ward Three of Latinos. And so I, that's my whole reason, uh, to, to like the extra steps in, in option A. There, you can move it around a little bit, but, um, but I think that it is, um, it's about charting a different course that recognizes the importance of equitable boundaries in our city. Any other comments?
If I can just jump in, Mayor, I'm, I just, I, I couldn't have said it better myself. Um, thank you for breaking it down. Um, and the math, because I know that folks will think that option B is easy. It's an easy fix, and we're gonna be back here in two years, and everything's gonna change again. Um, but, but I think in line with how we, you know, shifted, um, like the values that guide a lot of our policymaking, but I think it's important to continue that when we're talking about the redistricting, when it comes to equitable representation, um, and fair representation, um, for all of our Tucsonans, and that, you know, Tucson continues to shift, you know, we're a minority-majority city, and we're still not seeing folks, you know, representing us, uh, reflect that shift. So thank you.
Any further, well, this is, um, this is interesting because it really affects the core, um, word, mostly Ward Three, Ward One, Ward Six, Ward Five. And this is, um, there's not a lot of change, uh, happening in Ward Two and, and, and Ward Four. So, um, I, I know that, that that's the case in this particular, for the both options in this particular case, but, um, I, I just think that, uh, we do have opportunities to take steps towards, um, you know, I, I, I think that we have the opportunity to take steps towards making differences. And it's, it's, uh, it's important that we take that under consideration as we, you know, and, uh, like I said, we don't have to make decisions today. This is the initiation of a conversation, and so, um, we can, we can always come back and continue this, this discussion, but, um, it's, it's an important conversation to have, and if there aren't any other questions or comments from my colleagues, then take it with you.
Mayor, Mayor, I, I'd move that we adopt recommendation A as proposed, as presented.
Recommendation? Okay.
I was gonna second that. If we want to go ahead and move forward tonight, I'm good with that.
Does that mean, what was the recommendation again? There were two options put on the table. Were we talking about option A?
It's the one to three moves on the chessboard.
Okay, uh, do you, you got a second on that? I'll second it. Or did Nikki do it already?
Nikki did.
All right, that's fine.
There's a, there's a motion to move, um, and I, I don't know if we all want to move in that direction. We still have time, but, um, just want to check the temperature. Everyone good?
I think we're gonna be back in two years after the census comes, and the new numbers are there, but this gives us a foundation to start from, I believe, and that's good. You know, we're talking about that. So I think, I think call for the question and give the direction. I also want to thank all the folks who were on the redistricting committee to put this together for us. Thank you, and also thank you, Roger.
Thank you, Roger. Thank you so much. So there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Your Honor, I have one question, I'm so sorry.
No, that's okay, Vice Mayor, go ahead.
Will this be in effect for the 21 elections if we have them?
We will bring an ordinance back by the end of December, putting them into effect. So yes, they would be in effect for 2021.
Not going to make such a difference, I was just curious.
All righty, so all around, just want to make sure that we're all okay to move on this or everything okay? I didn't expect a motion today, but.
Let's go.
Okay, all righty.
And I agree with Richard, thanks, thanks to the committee and the commission and Roger's staff for pulling this together.
With that, then all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes, thank you so much, that was, that was easy, y'all. Thank you all so much. Okay, let's move on to item 9. Staff has an update on the Public Safety Communications retrofit project, Mr. Manager.
Mayor, thank you for the opportunity, and I'll make this very short. The conversation here really is the budget change that I've made a recommendation on. I am looking for guidance for the $6 million for this project. The staff has provided you with a pretty detailed analysis and conversation in the memorandum and in the materials, so I am looking for a $6 million authorization to move forward. This money would come from cash carry forward. Happy to answer your questions, Mayor.
Your Honor, we talked about this at long length last week, we know what kind of investments needed to make our public safety communications viable. I move that we authorize the $6 million of one-time money to finish the retrofit for public safety communications.
I'll second that, Madam Mayor.
So there is a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes?
Thank you, Mayor and Council, appreciate it.
Thank you so much. Bring us all the pretty pictures the following time you come and talk to us about it. Does anyone have any items to remove from the consent agenda? Oh no, I'm sorry, item 10, I'm skipping item 10. Time has been set aside for discussion of state and national legislation, regional committee issues, and 2020 census efforts and 2020 election results. Andrew.
Thank you, Mayor. Honorable Mayor, members of the council, some updates on federal and state issues, some at the request of Councilmember Fimbres. Provided information earlier on postal funding, military funding, as well as PFAS grants, federal grants that are available to the city. I'll highlight here, in the interest of time, just some of the more timely items for mayor and council. First, on the stimulus, yesterday President-elect Biden endorsed the HEROES Act, which would provide about $2.2 trillion in stimulus. Today, Speaker Pelosi and Minority Leader Schumer in the Senate wrote a letter, joint letter, to Leader McConnell, also asking the leader to come to the table and start negotiations on a new COVID relief package. We'll see what the Republicans do in response, but that happened today, and again, we're hopeful that if not a stimulus bill during the lame duck soon after, or that there may be some provisions that would add funding to help with all the needs across the country as part of the federal 2021 spending plan, which is due by December 11th. Two other quick items, one having to do with the census. Councilmember Fimbres asked about timelines in relation to legislation and litigation regarding the census. As far as legislation, the House has passed the provisions of the Census Deadline Extensions Act, the Senate has not. We are pushing on the senators to take up that act as soon as possible. As far as the litigation is concerned, on November 30th, the U.S. Supreme Court will hear a case, which has to do with whether the administration can exclude undocumented immigrants in the census as so far as congressional apportionment is concerned. There are many groups fighting this, and the court will hear that case November 30th, so by the next council meeting, I'll be able to report on how that hearing went. And then finally, on election items, I'm sure many of you know at least some of the results of the federal and state elections, there is still some counting going on, and I believe there are about 12 congressional races across the country that have not been called yet. We do expect Democrats to maintain the majority in the House, the U.S. House of Representatives. Right now, it's a 50 to 48 lead by the Republicans in the Senate, but there will be two runoff elections in the state of Georgia on January 5th that will determine the majority, or at least which party will be able to control the U.S. Senate for at least the next couple of years. At the State House and the State Senate, Republicans maintained their slight majority as they had last session, they have exactly a one-vote majority in both the Arizona House and the Arizona Senate. They are currently choosing leaders of the caucuses in both House and Senate, as well as today and yesterday, and I believe more tomorrow, they'll be filling committee chairs and committee assignments. So we are starting to get a feel for what the state legislature will look like, and as a headline to that, at your next study session, we'll be reviewing the 2021 state legislative agenda in light of those election results, and we'll be talking about what are your priorities going into the next legislative session. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Fimbres?
Madam Mayor, since 2011, we've been fighting to keep the postal distribution center open, and we've been doing it every year, challenging. Now I hear that there's a movement by the postal master to privatize the postal center, and I would like to bring forth a motion that we join with all the labor groups and the, the small businesses that are going to be directly affected by this by saying that we don't want to have this made into a privatization movement on this. You wait until the new administration comes in so we can redo a thorough analysis and study on what the importance is of this. I know there's, there was a press, two press conferences today, and there's two, I think, for the setup for this weekend also to bring up their work. So I'd like to move, like we have several times in the past, in the last 11 years, we've been dealing with this, on this action, make a motion that we, we oppose the privatization of the U.S. Postal Service.
So, so there's a, there's a motion, do we, did someone say second? Or do we need a second?
I will second, however you want to move forward.
So how would we go about it, Andrew? I mean, do we have to, would we take a stand as a city of Tucson? Is it letters to our congressional delegation? How would you recommend that we proceed?
Yeah, Honorable Mayor, members of the council, at your direction, we can draft the letters to the delegation that express, should the, the motion pass, that express the mayor and council's position opposing privatization of the U.S. Postal Service. And, and I would say that that is consistent with many of the efforts we've taken over the years, as Councilmember Fimbres alluded to, to protect Cherry Bell.
Absolutely. So there's a motion and a second, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. I do have, Andrew, at the request of Councilmember Fimbres, we do have Maria Cardenas that wanted to give us a small review of the 2020 census here in Pima County. So I don't know if she's here, Maria? Thank you so much. Can you do us a very short review of your assessment of census here in, in Pima County?
Madam Mayor, I'd also like to recognize Maria Cardenas because she just got recognized at a national level for her efforts on the census, and she, there's a lot of gratitude for her work on this area.
Absolutely. She was really a, really a champion, really moved and hustled, and we really appreciate your service, Maria.
Yes, thank you so much, Mayor. I'm a proud Tucsonan, I love Tucson, and everybody saw that, and, and I'm very proud to be part of this community. Just overall, Maria Cardenas from the U.S. Census, we did great. I have some updates for you, but first of all, I want to recognize Mayor and Council for all your support, your financial support, the mayor's office staff, they were so great, Nate, I love you, you did so much for us, everyone did so much for, for us, and, and we were going through so many challenges like everyone else, but we, we finished very strong. Our numbers, they look good. We actually tied our 2010 self-response at the end with the 65.3% of the self-responses. One of the things that I would like to share with you, that Tucsonans, they desire, they decide to use more our new way to do this, which is online. So 51.1% of Tucson residents did it online, which is a great accomplishment for us. As you know, this is the first time that we do this online, and we didn't have no downtimes, no data breaches, and the average response for people online, it was between five to nine minutes, which is, you know, nothing. And 79.86% nationwide, people respond by internet, which was the easiest and preferred, 18.3% in, in paper, and then 1.85% by phone. So the national self-response is 67%. The projected self-response rate, it was 65.6, so we, we went over, and I'm very happy about that. The response rate in 2010 was 66.5, so we went over that. So I'm very happy that people understand the need and they, you know, help us to, to make sure that we get to these numbers. I did email Mr. Randolph on PowerPoint presentation, it has a lot of the information, I can email it to all of you guys, it has a lot of numbers and information, but one of the things that I wanted to share with you, it was that here in the city of Tucson, we did have the group quarters facility. We, we did collect all the data information from those facilities, which is the soup kitchens, the shelters, we also did the, the non-sheltered outdoor locations under the bridges, we did count all those people, we, we were very successful to be able to reach out. And then another one thing that I want to share with you, just alone in Pima County, we had 566 enumerators, and 301, they were designated for the city of Tucson, because we were expecting the self-response was going to be higher than what we, we were having, so we allocated 301 for the city of Tucson. And, but overall, our office manager, or our office here located in Tucson, that covers nine states, I mean, nine counties, we had in total 1,267 enumerators. The projection was to have a little over 1,582, but because of the pandemic, you know, like everybody else, we were facing different challenges, so we end up with 1,267, but we did finish our numbers. Another thing that I would like to share with you, and you will put this date, the American Community Survey for 2019, is going to be released on December 10 of 2020. So by hearing you guys talking about new things that you want to utilize these numbers, the 2019 responses will come out on December 10 of 2020. We're doing a lot of surveys in top of what we usually do in the decennial census, so the American Community Survey is going to start coming up in February, like every year. So we're still hiring a lot of people, we still need people to do the housing, the, for the Department of Housing, we're doing a humongous survey that we need to complete, and we really need people to come and work for us. So if any of you guys would like to have more information, you can contact me, I'm your point of contact for all Southern Arizona. And another thing is, the city of Tucson will have, we were talking about the Hispanic population, one of the good things that I want to say thank you to you guys is that, especially Mayor Romero, they took the initiative to do this campaign in Spanish. Pima County was asking me, what can we do? And I said, you're missing this Hispanic population, they need to know, they're the hard to count, they're the ones that don't trust, so we need trusted voices like Mayor Romero and city, the whole council members, and, and all the community members to be able to reach out to them and understand why this is important and what is the impact for this community. So that's my overall, I have, I have some pictures, great pictures, thank you, Mayor, for supporting us in our events, and Mayor Fimbres, and, I mean, Councilmember Fimbres, and Lady Santa Cruz for helping us during this drive-through events. Ward 3, the Donald Liggins program was perfect for us, we completed so many questionnaires, so thank you, everyone, that's what we want to say. So I don't have the opportunity to be with you in person, but the census sent you this thank you certificate, so it is signed by our National Director to say thank you for your efforts. I hope I can have the opportunity to give you in person, if not, I can mail it to you, but I, I just wanted to have the opportunity to say thank you to all of you guys.
Well, thank you so much, Maria, you did a fabulous job, and thank you, Councilmember Fimbres, for inviting Maria to today's study session. This is important work that we all did, that mayor and council really highly participated, we had the, we had the support of our city manager, and that we all really pitched in to make this a success. I'm really impressed that we had the same reporting levels as 2010 in the middle of a pandemic.
Yes.
I could just.
We did it at the last minute, like.
I could just imagine what it would have been, but Councilmember Santa Cruz, you put your hand up?
Yes, I also just wanted to thank Maria for all her work, I remember Maria working at the Ed Public Senior Center, so it's always great, you know, to see all the ways that she continues, you know, to work, you know, diligently for our community. And then also just thank mayor and council for allocating those funds, you know, at the end to really push, you know, to get, get in front of more people, you know, to fill out the census. I think that with the new technologies at our disposal, it, it's only going to get better, you know, with, with time as we do, as we do outreach. So just, you know, thank you, and I do just want to revisit, you know, some of our procurement policies moving forward so that we are able to contract and do business with folks who understand those communities that are usually harder to reach.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, thank you both. We have to move forward. Andrew, did you want to include anything else?
Yeah, that's all, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you so much for allowing us to put this particular conversation in, in this item. Thank you, Maria, muchas gracias.
Thank you.
All righty, we move on to item 11, does anyone have any items to remove from the consent agenda?
Madam Mayor, I wanted to pull 7E for further discussion.
All righty. Thank you. Roger, I believe we also were going to remove, where's my, let's see.
7G.
7G, that's the one that I was looking for, yeah.
And I believe that Councilwoman Cunningham had requested 7H, as well as I recall, so 7H and 7G would be removed from, also removed from the agenda.
Any, any others, Roger?
That's all, Your Honor.
I'd like to remove item B from consent agenda, item B as well. Item B as well. All righty. With that, let's move on to item 12. Does anyone have any future agendas? Okay, hearing none. Study session is adjourned. I do want to give you about 15 minutes, okay? Because we've been added nonstop since 1 o'clock. So I'm going to give you 15 minutes to stretch your legs, walk around a little and grab a snack before we start. So let's regroup in 15 minutes. Thank you all so much and we'll see you in 15. Take care.
Here.
Mr. Cunningham.
Here.
Mr. Durham.
Absent excused.
Mrs. Lee.
Here.
Mr. Fimbras.
Here.
Mr. Kazachi.
Here.
Mayor Romero.
Here. Item two.
invocation and appointments to boards committees and commissions.
The invocation will be given by Anna Marufo, staff member for the city clerk's office. Mr. Clerk.
Here we go. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
I pray for our mayor and council members today and ask that you grant them wisdom to govern with a sense of welfare and true needs of our people. Give them the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement. Deepen their love for the city of Tucson and their desire to serve it. And pray for the agenda set before them today. Amen.
Amen. Item two B.
Appointments to boards committees and commissions.
City manager's communication three seven nine dated November seventeenth is received into and made part of the record.
Mayor, I motion to approve the appointment of Amanda Schreiber to the Pima County Tucson Women's Commission and Luke Johnson and Rosio Carey to the Veteran Affairs Committee.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I would like to thank both Rosio, Rosio Carey and Luke Johnson for their willingness to serve our city. Are there any personal appointments to be made at this time? Do I have one? I'd like to appoint Alma Anides Morales to the Commission on Climate, Energy and Sustainability. Alma is a doctoral student in the Integrated Environmental Services and Health Risk Lab at the University of Arizona. She recently received her MS in Environmental Science from the College of Agriculture and Life Sciences. Her work focuses on assessing environmental exposure to contaminants, risk communication and using geospatial tools to analyze socio-environmental vulnerability along the U.S.-Mexican border. I want to thank Alma for her willingness and commitment to serve the commission. Item three.
Mayor and council report summary of current events.
City manager's communication three eighty, three eighty dated November seventeenth is received into and made part of the record. This time has been scheduled to allow members of the mayor and council to report on current events. These are to be current events of activities within the community, not position statements on policy issues. Does any council member have anything to report at this time? Let me go down the line. Ward one.
None at this time.
Ward two, Vice Mayor.
Your Honor, just a reminder. We have free testing available throughout the city. We have multiple locations and pop-up locations. This is kind of important. I know folks are going to have their Thanksgiving anyway. What I'd recommend is if you're planning on hosting Thanksgiving, please encourage your guests at the highest level to get tested a couple of days before so that they get the results back knowing that the window they could have contracted the virus is lower. We want to protect ourselves and protect our families and our loved ones. So if you can make a somewhat Thanksgiving bubble as best you can, go for it. That's what the free testing is for, is for situations like this. So I encourage everybody to get testing just for peace of mind.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Ward four, Councilwoman Lee.
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Ward five, Councilmember Fimbras.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to congratulate Reverend Amos Lewis and the Rising Star Baptist Church for the successful hosting of the one hundredth annual session of the Paradise Mission Baptist State Convention at Rising Star Baptist Church in Ward five. Delegates from across the state took part virtually in this year's session held November fifth through the seventh. On Thursday, November twelfth, I had the privilege of taking over thank you cards made by students from schools in Ward five and from my office to the veterans who are at the Southern Arizona VA Hospital and on staff. In addition, Ward five coins of freedoms were also presented to the VA. It's March the tenth here. Students and schools have helped with this effort to thank those who have served our country. I want to thank the veterans for their service and I want to thank the staff of the VA for their commitment to help those who have served our country. On Saturday, November fourteenth, Pastor Grady Scott of Grace Temple Baptist Church and Teresa Scott, First Lady of Grace Temple Baptist Church, were honored for their thirty years of service at the church and their work to better our community. Caritioners of Grace Temple located in Ward five organized a drive-by parade for Pastor Scott and Teresa. Pastor Scott and Teresa received the Ward five certificate of appreciation and the Ward five medallion of hope. Congratulations to Pastor Scott and Teresa for your service to our community and our commitment to bettering the lives of those in Tucson. On Saturday, November twenty first, from nine AM to noon at the Tucson Rodeo Grounds, forty-eight twenty-three South Sixth Avenue, Arizona Bilingua, will be holding their Thanksgiving gift drive-through turkey giveaway. Ward five is again a proud co-sponsor of this event. I also want to thank Tim Temure and the Parks and Rec Department for working with Arizona Bilingua to help coordinate the drive-through map of the rodeo grounds for this event. I want to thank Pastor Peter Norbeck also from the Neighborhood Association for his outstanding job and commitment to organizing the roll-offs for the neighborhoods cleanup this past week. And joining with Paul Cunningham, please be careful. There's Thanksgiving coming up. Be safe, stay healthy and wear a mask. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Fimbras. Councilmember Kazachi.
Just want to wish our best to Mark Kerr. He had a medical procedure yesterday and wish him a speedy recovery.
Absolutely. And I'd like to thank the veterans on our council. Last Wednesday was Veterans Day, a very special day for our family. My brother, Jose Romero, is a veteran of Desert Storm and thank him for his service. And I want to thank Councilwoman Lee and Councilmember Fimbras for their service to our country. It was wonderful to be able to celebrate with our family, with the community, even if it was virtually. But I wanted to take this opportunity to thank our veterans on the Tucson City Council, Councilwoman Lee and Councilmember Fimbras. Thank you two so much.
Madam Mayor, also thank the Vice Mayor Paul Cunningham, who also served this country well through the armed forces and army reserves. We have three veterans on the council right now, Madam Mayor.
So sorry, Vice Mayor. It's absolutely true. Thank you all, Vice Mayor Cunningham, Councilwoman Lee and Councilmember Fimbras for your service to our country. We are eternally grateful for your selfless sacrifice.
Your Honor, I have one more announcement I wanted to make tonight.
Go ahead, Councilmember, Vice Mayor.
I want to congratulate my son Joseph on his exception to the, on his, I'm being accepted to the University of Arizona. He's currently serving as the student body president in Rincon High School. And he was accepted into the University of Arizona with a good scholarship and I'm just so, so, so proud of him.
Wow, you should be.
Congratulations, Joseph. Good job.
Another wildcat in the family. Thank you all so much. Item four.
City managers report summary of current events.
City manager's communication number three eight one dated November seventeenth is received into and made part of the record. This time has been scheduled to allow the city manager to report on current events. Mr. Manager.
Mayor, I have no report. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Item five.
Liquor license applications report from city manager.
City manager's communication number three eight two dated November seventeenth is received into and made part of the record. Mr. Clerk, please read the liquor license agenda.
Yeah, and this evening's liquor license agenda under item fee five, five B, we have seven requests for new license, three requests for personal location transfer. Staff has indicated that all the applicants are in compliance with city requirements with the exception of five B three. That application has been continued at the request of the applicant. An appropriate motion would be to forward items five B one through ten with the exception of three to the State Liquor Board with the recommendation of approval.
May I have a motion, please?
Madam Mayor, I move to move forward the liquor licenses to the State Liquor Board with the recommendation of approval as recommended by the city clerk.
Mayor, I actually wanted to pull one of the licenses in Ward one.
Okay, which one is that, Ray?
It's the fast market number four six one four over on Drexel.
Okay, go ahead, Councilmember.
So, you know, the pandemic's made it a little bit challenging for folks to get to us at a timely manner with this, but I wanted to remove the item because after speaking, you know, with constituents and stakeholders in groups such as SNAP, they've clearly stated that no series twelve liquor license in the south side due to saturation and lack of oversight on the state level in an already stressed police, you know, force, especially in that area. So, you know, with those considerations, I want to pull it and vote no separately on that item.
So, can the motion?
I'll amend my motion, Madam Mayor.
Yeah, if you want a friendly amendment procedurally, I can give you that.
I think that if the motion maker makes the amendment, the, did we get a second? Whoever is the second?
No, Your Honor, we didn't have a second yet. So I'll second the motion with the provision that we've removed the fast market.
Okay, so there is a motion and a second with the amendment. Any continued discussion? Hearing none. Do you need a roll call, Mr. Clerk?
No, no, it's on a voiceless plan.
So all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Councilmember Santa Cruz. You just need a motion to?
So, yeah, I move to deny the liquor license for fast market number four six one four.
I'll second that.
There is a motion and a second. Any continued discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Councilmember. Item six.
Call to the audience.
At this time, the public is allowed to address the mayor and council on any issue. Speakers are limited to three-minute presentations. Calls to the audience is scheduled to last for thirty minutes. Pursuant to the Arizona Open Meetings Law, individual council members may ask the city manager to review the matter, ask the matter be placed on a future agenda or respond to criticism made by speakers. However, the mayor and council may not discuss or take legal action on matters raised during call to the audience. I do have a list for calls to the audience. And what I'd like to do, since there are several speakers that wish to speak about Reed Park Zoo and the duck pond at the Reed Park Zoo, I would like to set the tone with the executive director of the Reed Zoo. I believe that we have a representative from Reed Park. I think Nancy should be with us.
Yes, I'm here, Mayor Romero.
Oh, excellent, Nancy. Thank you so much. Could you state your name and your occupation to make it part of the record?
Yes. Honorable Mayor Romero, members of the council, Mr. Ortega, thank you for the time to speak today. My name is Nancy Kluge. I am a resident of Ward two and I am here today as the president and CEO of Reed Park Zoological Society.
Go ahead.
I've been coming to, thank you for the time to speak today. I've been coming to you over the last several years throughout the planning process for Reed Park Zoo's master plan. And I am happy to give you our latest update. We are nearing completion of the Welcome Plaza and new Flamingo Habitat with a ribbon-cutting plan for early January. The new play area will be constructed in 2021. Recent contention has been drawn to the zoo's Pathway to Asia exhibit, which will encompass the hill and smaller South Pond at the edge of Reed Park. Pathway to Asia will bring opportunities for guests to connect with nature and wildlife and is highly anticipated by many members of our community. The project is scheduled to begin construction in February, March of next year with completion at the beginning of 2023. We care about nature. Having places of solace and restoration is more important now than ever. And having the community zoo and parks as places to connect with nature is so important. We also care about Reed Park. We are looking forward to working with Tucson Parks and Recreation to make improvements to the North Pond. This includes adding a new pump station to create a healthier water space for wildlife that use that pond, adding landscaping and rebuilding the waterfall. There was a public process to gather input for the master plan. We know even with outreach, we couldn't reach everyone. We have met and talked to a number of members of our community and appreciate our shared love of nature and natural features in parks. We look forward to an ongoing dialogue with Tucson Parks and Recreation that is influenced by the comments and input that we have received. Having a zoo is important. It gives people who may never travel the opportunity to learn about wildlife and understand how conservation actions we take here in Tucson can add up to actions that protect wildlife and wild places throughout the world. Tucson Zoo has been providing connections with nature to half a million guests annually, including more than thirty-four thousand who are able to come at free or significantly reduced prices. Pathway to Asia will provide the same world-class habitat from laying tigers that we were able to provide for elephants. Tucson's elephant program is known as one of the best in the country. With Pathway to Asia, we can provide tigers with the space they deserve while working to save them from extinction. Thank you for your support of Reed Park Zoo and of our community.
Thank you, Nancy. We also have Alex Sacta. Mr. Clerk, do we have Alex Sacta?
I don't see him on, Your Honor.
All righty, we'll move on to Jose Muñoz.
He's on, Your Honor.
Jose Muñoz, if you are on the phone, you have to press star six in order for us to hear you.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can. You have three minutes.
Hello, council members and mayor. It is an honor to be here in front of you all. And I come today with big concerns and I'm outraged by this plan for the expansion zoo. We are in 2020 and if there's something that we've learned during this pandemic is how valuable our green spaces are to this community. It comes to me as I just found out about this plan. And I am very concerned just as fifteen thousand plus community members here in Tucson. And I think I am asking council members, city manager and the mayor to put a pause at these plans and this construction until there is further discussion about this. Because it is, I do not see this being congruent with the values of this city for the community of allowing accessible, free green space and with initiatives that we have going on around climate change. And it's just outrageous. And I think we need a Um, and it's just outrageous, and I think we need a, a, take a pause and really uh listen to our community because this community is paying for it, and this is tax dollars. Um, and I think it's really, really important. Um, and I know there was outreach, but my question is, was the outreach done in Spanish? When was this outreach done? Um, and I think we need to reconsider these plans uh as, as we, as construction is set to begin in March. So I am asking um as leaders of the city um to take a, um, to look at alternatives for this expansion zoo because the city did not, the, the voters and taxpayers did not vote for an expansion. They voted for improvement, operations, and maintenance to the zoo. Never did it mention anything about expansion to the zoo. That's gonna take three point five acres away from the community, and this community needs parks and accessible green space. So, that is my call and my demand to this councilmembers, to this leadership um because we cannot let this happen. We have to save the heart of Reed Park Zoo. Of Reed Park, sorry.
Thank you, Mister Muñoz. I really appreciate your voice in this process, and we are going to make sure that um the city manager clarify um your concerns. So we'll make sure that we have your email and, and contact information to try and find a way to give you all the necessary information you need.
Yeah, and I look forward to it because I've emailed every single ward, the mayor, and I, we, we, we want to make sure that um this, there's an alternative plan because we cannot move forward with it.
Thank you. Thank you, Mister Muñoz. Um, we do have others that wanna speak as well, so we're going to move forward, okay? Thank you. Manon Getzi?
Yes, your honor.
Is he, is he? Manon Getzi?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great, thank you. Um, my name is Manon Getzi. I am a twenty-five-year-long resident of Tucson. I bought my home just a block west of Reed Park because of Reed Park and the beautiful old trees and shady areas, but specifically because of Barnum Hill. Um, I have been watching over the summer during COVID and seeing how heavily used this area has been. Um, it is, you know, I was watching there on Veterans Day to see how heavily used this area was. It was packed. There were people picnicking, walking, children playing, and um it, it, it just is a beautiful area with a large canopy of old, some of them hundred-year-old trees. Um, if they plan to take out thirty trees, which they do, um, anything that they do is gonna get under the root systems and affect the other trees. If they move the pond, it's gonna affect the trees. We all know what happens when you start digging. The boars come. Um, you know, twenty twenty changed the world we live in. We lost trees and fires and windstorms in Tucson and, and multiple states. We lost areas to play in locally and in multiple states around us because of fire and winds. Our heat index is rising along with our stress levels. Many of us are trapped inside of our homes, on our computers, and our children are on Zoom. We need places that we can get to easily with shade and water in central Tucson for the health of our nervous systems and our immune system. Going to a zoo is often stressful. There is concrete under our feet instead of earth. There's an entrance fee. It has to be planned in advance. It's a whole-day event opposed to a walk in the park, a picnic, a quick stretch to the legs. The zoo is not a place you can come and catch up on reading under a tree and do homework. The zoo is a place you can, you take family members who are in town briefly, and we all know how bad energy feels. Kids need natural environments to play in for their development. We have far too many concrete or contrived play areas already. We only have one Barnum Hill waterfall, trees, and pond with public access in the center of Tucson, which all kinds of people, young and old, use on a daily basis. Um, it has an area, it's one of the few areas that doesn't have goat heads in it. You can actually walk your dog um or walk barefoot without getting those things in your feet. It sounds like a small petty reason, but it's actually a big deal for many of us. Um, I can't walk on concrete anymore very easily. I have collapsed arches and a genetic condition. So that area for me is very, very beloved. Um, it's been recommended in the past, specifically about in a power outage. Are we done? That areas of the Reed Park could be a refuge during intense heat. There aren't that many big trees left in Reed Park thanks to poor maintenance. We need the Barnum Hill trees. Are you still there?
Yeah, we're, we're here, Ms.
Okay, I'm sorry.
If you, if you come to, if you can come to a conclusion, that's okay. Uh, if you can come to a conclusion, please.
Okay. It's been recommended in the past in a power outage um that Reed Park could be used as a refuge during intense heat. Um, taking down this environment will likely increase the heat index and hurt other trees in the park. Humans in Tucson need this outdoor, natural, free, shady water habitat more than ever in the twenty twenties. Um, and, and finally, I would just like to say in nineteen twenty-five, the city of Tucson wanted a park in central Tucson but lacked the funds. Mister Willis Barnum paid fourteen thousand eight hundred ninety-six dollars for a four hundred eighty acre parcel of land to create a park in, in what is now central Tucson, dating this to the city on a long-term purchase agreement. In nineteen ninety-three, the much-loved hill in the park, the heart of Tucson where water flows and all the trees reside and wide lots of bounds, was named for Mister Barnum, who financed the original purchase of the land. Now that the city of Tucson has, Tucson has imminent plans to destroy Barnum Hill, the only thing in the park that honors its legacy from a historical and moral standpoint, this is really just wrong. Um, and I would, I would really ask that we reconsider um and take into account all of this and all the changes with twenty twenty, and if we need to extend the zoo to take it elsewhere and to keep historic, iconic Barnum Hill and the South Duck Pond. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much, Miss Getzi. Um, is Charlene Mendoza available?
Yes, your honor.
Okay, Miss Mendoza, um, if you are on the phone, you can.
Hello?
Oh, there you are. We can hear you. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Um, hello, mayor and council. My name is Charlene Mendoza, and tonight I'm speaking on behalf of Las Aralitas, Arizona. Uh, we are here to share with you our press release, uh, letting you know that we have worked with several hundred local Tucsonans and organizations circulating a petition in solidarity with councilmember Lane Santa Cruz. Uh, we have emailed the press release and copies of the petition or a link to the petition to your city council email, so you'll have access to all of that. Uh, we're also happy to discuss any of these issues with you. Um, our statement is issued in response to repeated requests by TPOA to the Tucson City Council to censure councilmember Lane Santa Cruz. Las Aralitas, Arizona, is submitting the petition condemning TPOA for this politically motivated attack and expressing strong community support for councilmember Santa Cruz. Our statement reads, Las Aralitas, Arizona, affirms councilmember Santa Cruz's willingness to ask questions, demand accountability, and engage with our community. Councilmember Santa Cruz was courageous enough and committed enough to her constituents to stand in communities to risk her own safety to protect her constituents and to place her own body between police and riot gear and protesters. We believe these attacks on the part of the Tucson Police Officers Association towards councilmember Santa Cruz professionally and personally are an attempt to intimidate, misrepresent, and deflect attention away from councilmember Santa Cruz's legitimate concerns and actions. These attacks are politically motivated, stemming from their support of the Trump agenda and employing the same bullying tactics he has popularized at the national level. We further believe the actions of the TPOA are in response to councilmember Santa Cruz's requests for and insistence upon accountability for the incustody death of Carlos Adrian Ingram Lopez and her vote against renewing the police union contract. Her vote, as a matter of record, is one hundred percent within her rights and obligations as a duly-elected member of the Tucson City Council to use as she sees fit. We refuse to participate in or perpetuate the cycles of violence and intimidation with our silence. The tactics employed by the TPOA against councilmember Santa Cruz have a long history of being used against women, especially women of color, and even more particularly against women who are brave enough to stand up to the status quo and account and demand accountability and change.
Thirty seconds.
Las Aralitas, Arizona, along with individual and organizational signers of this petition, including the Pima County Democratic Party, condemned the TPOA's manipulation tactics and stand in solidarity with member, councilmember Santa Cruz. We request the mayor and council dismiss the unwarranted request for censure, that councilmember Santa Cruz's actions be considered aggravated assault, or that her freedom to vote her conscience be condemned. Thank you for your time. Las Aralitas, Arizona's mission is to recruit, educate, and mobilize Latinas to participate in the political process and support progressive issues of impact to Latinas in Arizona. So thank you for your time, and we ask you to join us in our support of councilmember Santa Cruz.
Thank you so much for your time and your voice. Jasmine May?
Yes, your honor.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hello, my name is Dr. Jasmine May. I attest and affirm that the following statements are true, accurate, and within my personal knowledge. As a healthcare provider, I see many people with chronic disease, including those with electromagnetic sensitivity. This is a serious issue that warrants your immediate attention. Five G or fifth-generation wireless deploys xenobiotic pulsed modulated microwave radiation in wavelengths ranging from twenty inches down to point one inch, which are all in addition to the existing three G, four G wavelengths. Microwave radiation in these wavelengths is hazardous because it is maximally absorbed by human, animal, and insect bodies. Xenobiotic means foreign to all life. Five G near-millimeter waves, um, twenty thousand to forty thousand megahertz, penetrate into and harm eyes, ears, and skin while beam-forming concentrates the radiation, concentrating the spray into laser-like and powerful beam. Microwave's radiation's effects on human health is one of the most studied phenomena in science. The U.S. and other militaries studied the effects of radar and other microwave weapons in the years leading up to World War Two. Through twenty twenty, over twenty thousand studies document the adverse biological effects of microwave radiation on humans, animals, insects, and plants. But these are biological, these biological effects are wholly ignored by the FCC, ANSI, other agencies. Harms occur at intensities far below any FCC or International Maximum Public Exposure Guidelines. Such a willful ignorance has been a scam from day one. In short, the emperor has no clothes. Microwave radiation causes neurologic harms such as insomnia, ADD, and the memory loss, and opens the blood-brain barrier such that toxins easily enter the brain. Micro, microwave radiation impairs heart rhythm and increases blood pressure. Microwave radiation causes DNA damage, leading to birth defects and cancer, and impairs cellular respiration, reducing the red blood cell's ability to uptake oxygen. The deployment of microwave radiation upon Tucson residents without their knowledge or consent will result in certain harm. Local government cannot lawfully shirk its duty to deliver public safety. The metric that matters most is how much microwave radiation invade second- and third-story bedrooms. Comparing professional measurements of microwave radiation from a properly-sighted macro tower with antennas that are twenty-five hundred feet away and two hundred feet off the ground to the microwave radiation from a typical so-called small cell with antennas that are fifty feet away and twenty-five to thirty feet off the ground leads to a stunning conclusion that a so-called small cell pumps into bedrooms twenty-five million times more power than needed for five bars on a cellphone, twenty-five million times higher. That's a disaster in anyone's book and completely unnecessary. We need a protective local ordinance in Tucson. I've expressed no matter of concern, but solely matters of substance effect and law. I accept your.
Come to a conclusion, please, Miss May.
Thank you, that's it.
Thank you. Azul Navarrete Valera?
Yes, your honor.
Azul Navarrete Valera?
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Dear Honorable Mayor and Council, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. Huali tia ta ki nawa na toka, Azul Navarrete Valera. Hello, my name is Azul Navarrete Valera. I am a senior Tucson High, and my tribe is Nawa. And I am the local president for the Tucson Native Youth Council. This evening, I'll be discussing the issue with the name Christopher Columbus Park and how having a public park named Christopher Columbus in Tucson, originally named Chikshun, on Tana'atam Land is outrageous and an insult to indigenous people due to the glorification of this man and the normalization of his actions that has left an emotional and traumatic scar on our people. By having the park named Christopher Columbus, it glorifies the man who started the mass genocide of indigenous peoples, the abuse towards indigenous women and children, and the man who began the cycle of conquering our land and forcing indigenous peoples onto reservations. By having the park named Christopher Columbus, it honors the man whose, whose actions have destroyed indigenous families and ways of life, and whose legacy is attributed to many due to his claim of erasing our people by murdering and bringing in deadly diseases onto our land. It is insulting and embarrassing to our ancestors and our people to have a memorial park on Tana'atam Land be held for someone such as Christopher Columbus, a man who ended his extinct. This public park is uninviting and unwelcome to many indigenous families as his name holds severe traumatic trauma, historical trauma, and knowing that he was the one who started the systematic oppression towards our people and the dehumanization towards us as we still see indigenous peoples being viewed as mascots or talked about as if we're extinct. Although some may say that this did not happen to our generations or to our tribe, public parks to, a public park to praise Christopher Columbus normalizes his actions. It pains me to see how his actions were a huge inspiration to start boarding schools for Native children where the goal was to reparentate cultural identity by cutting their hair and changing their name to where we now see indigenous peoples being classified as foreign or lower class. His name itself is a subtle reminder that we, indigenous peoples, were not supposed to be here. It is a disturbing name for a public park, and I would not want my children to go to a memorial park for a man who tried to kill off our people. That's what I'm thinking. Thank you.
Thank you. Kelly Kennedy?
I don't see her, your honor.
Sabah Bennett?
Yes, your honor.
Sabah Bennett? If you are on the phone, you can press star six. Any luck, Mister clerk? Jessica Flax?
Hi, I'm Sabah Bennett, and I'm speaking to you as a resident of Julia Keen. You can hear me, correct?
Yes, we can. Go ahead, Miss Bennett.
Oh, great. Thank you. And we were uh made aware about two weeks ago of the zoo's expansion into the Reed Park Duck Pond Barnum Hill area. And my issue, I think, is more on, uh, you know, I, I obviously agree with Jose, I agree with Manon. I agree with our entire group that we have formed our grassroots coalition. And there, this is an egregious failure on the part of Nancy Kluge and the Zoological Society to include the surrounding neighborhoods. We were, we dug long and wide to try to find the outreach materials. When we did, When we did, we noticed that there was no mention of an annexation of the most valuable three-and-a-half acres of Reed Park. My neighbors, who are Wata'malans, are not going to probably attend a meeting that is, has nothing to do with them. Had the zoo been transparent in their outreach, had the media been transparent, because we have all the documents from the media, and came up forward and said that the zoo was taking over three-point-five acres of public park, we would have shown up in droves. This is, we were unfortunately not given a chance to represent ourselves. We requested documents from Nancy, and we met with her and Pam and the park manager on Saturday at the park, and we'll be there every Saturday at ten AM until our voices are heard. Green spaces are crucial, but there's been no historic landscape study. We're involving the UVA Extension. They're going out there actually this coming week to survey the area because of the WPA, here a stream system that's at risk. The environmental importance is beyond.
I think we lost, Ms. Bennett.
Oh, can you not hear me?
I think you lost me.
No, okay. I don't want to lose any of my time.
You can hear her.
Okay, there, you know, I also am a volunteer for the Tucson Wildlife Rescue Association. We do many releases there. Egrets and herons, owls live in those trees. And the reason they're cutting the trees is so a tiger won't climb out. They're covering the area with concrete. They're walling us out. And in particular, they're walling out the south side of the zoo. They're losing, we're losing our entrance, and we have another wall like the elephant enclosure, which took our soccer field, that will stand between us and public access. We are here to tell Nancy Kluge that we're not going away. We're going to be there every Saturday. And if it comes to a boycott, we are more than ready. We have already seventeen hundred signatures on that petition. So, we will be there with ticket signs until we have a stop order on this unbelievable project.
Thank you. We're having a little technical difficulty. Hold on with us for just a minute, please.
If you can still hear me, I'll keep talking. I have plenty to say about it. Hello? I'm not sure if you can still hear me. I can't, I can't hear you anymore, so.
So, thank you, thank you for your comment. Your, your time is up. The mayor is having some technical issues, and we'll rejoin the meeting just momentarily. Please hold.
Sorry about that. I was dropped. So sorry.
It's okay, Your Honor. You, you had called Jessica Flax, and she is on and available.
Ms. Flax, I'm so sorry. I got dropped by the internet. These are technical difficulties we have virtually. Go ahead. Ms. Flax?
She just, just unmuted, Your Honor. Her phone may be muted. If you're on your cellphone, hit star six.
That was a, hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, hi, um, thank you, Mayor Romero, and City Councilmembers for allowing me the opportunity to speak tonight. Um, I live right up the street from the zoo, um, in the Oreo Chico neighborhood in Ward Two. Um, I spend a lot of time at the park, um, living right up the street, um, as do my neighbors and a lot of my friends. And, um, none of us had no idea that, um, the South Duck Pond and Barnum Hill were going to be taken away, um, until an op-ed was published in the Daily Star about a week ago or a week and a half ago. Um, this op-ed said that the city and zoo, you know, were going to take over this piece of land and start construction. Um, I saw that the zoo had confirmed this, you know, via a Facebook post. And, um, I started a petition to ask the city council and the zoo to stop construction. Um, since starting it on the morning of November seventh, there are now fourteen thousand signatures from people who have voiced their opposition to this plan. Um, the reason that people are rightly outraged is because the process hasn't been made transparent. Um, if any of us knew that this was going to be happening, you know, at any time, we would have voiced our position at, you know, a more appropriate time before plans had been made to start construction and contracts had been signed. Um, so, if you look at the comments of the petition, again, the majority of the people who signed are concerned with this loss of free green public land. Um, when we voted in order to fund the zoo in two thousand seventeen, we did not vote for the city to appropriate a treasured part of the park and give it to the zoo. There are, um, you know, less areas of the, there's more areas of the zoo that are less frequented, and those areas might have been more appropriate. Free green spaces are really vital to a healthy economy, and taking away that space is really harmful to the communities, um, especially those that can't afford the zoo admission. Um, if you go to the park at any time of year, at any time of day, you can see people hanging out on the zoo, people taking their families there, um, at the, at the pond, taking their families there. It's a place that people really enjoy. And, you know, having just dirt and rocks and trees is a much different experience than just keeping a concreted duck pond. Um, so, I am respectfully asking the city council, the city manager, and the Reed Park Zoo to stop construction of this area immediately and revise plans with community input. Again, I understand that this is complicated because, um, you know, of the contracts that have already been signed, but this could have been prevented, you know, if outreach was appropriately conducted. Um, that's it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Uh, we have time for just one more speaker. And so, um, the others that want to speak about the zoo expansion could come back at our next meeting slated for December eighth. Um, or if you're happy with, uh, with those that already spoke representing your voice, then you have a choice. Um, I am going to call on Robin Mothser.
Yes, Your Honor.
Robin Mothser?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Council, for my three minutes to speak. My name is Robin Mothser, and there's a dangerous insurance problem related to 5G small-cell wireless transmission facilities that needs to be addressed immediately by the city of Tucson, or it will face enormous financial liability. Radio frequency, microwave radiation, and electromagnetic radiation have been classified by the wireless industry and the largest reinsurers in the world as toxic pollution. And all general liability plans include a pollution exclusion clause for radio frequency and electromagnetic radiation. The city has a legitimate right to require insurance, which means either third-party supplemental insurance without a pollution exclusion clause listing the city as an additionally insured, or you can self-insurance from multi-billion-dollar big AT&amp;T, big T-Mobile, or big Verizon directly. The problem is that the city of Tucson's not doing business directly with big AT&amp;T, big T-Mobile, or big Verizon. Instead, the firm signing the application is a shell company designed to go bankrupt as soon as the first claim arrives. That leaves the city of Tucson and the taxpayers holding the bag. This could cause bank, this could bankrupt our city unless the city does its due diligence and avoids debate and switch liability coverage terms from AT&amp;T, T-Mobile, or Verizon to a lesser shell company which holds insufficient assets. Make sure that the parent telecom companies remain liable, not to the city of Tucson. To learn more about this, Attorney Mark Pollock, who has successfully litigated the wireless industry on the issue, has placed both a great video and a set of slides to inform cities about how to best protect themselves from this sneaky wireless industry liability transfer gamut. You can find this information at the following links. Scientist, number four, wiredtech.com/thisworks, and also mystreetmychoice.com/thisworks. You can also read a detailed letter from Attorney Harry Lehman that uncovers this entire scam. Lehman has also successfully litigated the wireless industry on these issues. I'll, happy to send you the link upon request. Thank you for allowing me time to speak today.
Thank you so much. Um, we will have to ask the rest of the speakers to come back to us on the meeting of December eighth um, for your opportunity to speak to call to the audience. Thank you all so much for joining us today. Item seven?
Consent agenda items A through I.
Reports from the city manager on the consent agenda are received into and make part of the record. Mr. Clerk, you are requested to read the consent agenda.
Your Honor, this evening's consent agenda item A is approval of minutes. Item B is Tucson Code Amending Chapter Ten Fiscal Year 2021 Compensation Plan Schedules. This item will be considered separately at the request of the mayor. Item C is a final plat S two zero dash zero four two, fifty-eight, forty-two estates, lots one and two. Item D is real property approval of ground lease with T-Mobile West Tower LLC for telecommunications facility at Tucson Waterwell Site Number Twenty-One. Item E is a real property approval of ground lease with T-Mobile West Tower LLC for telecommunications facility at Rudy Garcia Park. This item will be considered separately at the request of Councilmember Fembres. Item F is an intergovernmental agreement amendment with Regional Transportation Authority of Pima County for the Grant Road Oracle Road to Swan Road Improvement Project Phases Three and Four. Items G and H have been continued at the request of staff. Item I is a resolution approving the Third Amendment to the Financial Participation Agreement with Community Foundation for Southern Arizona, YWCA of Southern Arizona, and Women's Foundation of Southern Arizona for the Cities We Are One's Resiliency Fund. As the extent of the consent agenda, Your Honor, appropriate motion will be to approve items A through I with the exceptions of B, E, G, and H. So moved.
There's a question and a second. Any further discussions on the items listed? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Clerk?
First item to be considered separately, Your Honor, was the item B, Tucson Code Amending Chapter Ten Fiscal Year 2021 Compensation Plan Schedules.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Um, I requested to pull this item so that we have a broader conversation about wages and compensation for our city employees. Um, earlier today during study session, we had a very positive discussion about the outlook for our budget. And, you know, being here through this tumultuous year and in other times, right, in other years that we've had, um, economic heartache. Um, I first got elected in November of two thousand seven. In that summer, in August of two thousand eight, we saw one of the worst economic crashes that we had seen in our generations or since the Great Depression. And our employees went through that recession with mayor and council um, and helped us through all of it. I remember times where we had to furlough our city employees for thirteen days. Um, we had the help of all of our labor organization, and every city employee added to, um, to the economic concern and helped us through it. And it took us years to recover from that recession, and a little bit at a time. With, um, the fiscal know-how and the determination of the mayor and council, we were able to give very slight cost-of-living adjustments and percentage increase to our city employees. Finally, we were able to, um, we were able to give a market, um, raise, um, to our police and fire. And, um, we dealt with compression issues for both police and fire. And, um, we started in the movement of bringing our minimum wage workers up to a fifteen-dollar-per-hour minimum wage. We started that process and did a market analysis for blue-collar workers. And unfortunately, there were a few workers left out of, of those movement, that movement forward um, in order to compensate their work and their cooperation with the mayor and council in the administration of all the years of, um, these individuals not seeing a raise. We have been able to do one-time, um, bonuses to our employees and took some steps forward in a very positive way. So, um, what I would like to, um, what I would like to present to you all is that this particular item, we're considering moving the minimum wage to twelve fifteen dollars, twelve dollars and fifteen cents an hour. Uh, this is by law. Voters in Arizona voted to bring the minimum wage up and adjust it with cost of living. Um, what I would like for you all, for my colleagues on the council to consider is that we, um, instead of moving it to twelve fifteen an hour, that we consider increasing the minimum wage for our city workers to fifteen dollars an hour. Um, this been, this discussion has been happening for a while. Um, as we heard in the study session, we are in a healthy place. We've saved a lot of money. Um, and revenue seems to be stable. Um, I also want to make sure that we're providing the market increases that have been provided to most of our workforce. Um, but we missed a handful of blue-collar workers who have not yet received an increase. Um, you know, I'm, I'm the proud daughter of a union, um, immigrant farm worker. I believe that one of the best investments we can make is in our workers. Um, the city of Tucson, uh, has gone through ups and downs, and, um, I think it is time that we, um, accomplish the goal that we set out two years ago in establishing a fifteen-dollar-an-hour minimum wage. Um, as such, I'd like my colleagues to consider a motion that we move, um, mayor and council, or direct the city manager to prepare and come back during the mayor and council retreat in December, uh, a consideration of an increase, uh, to the, to the minimum wage for city workers at, to fifteen dollars an hour, that addresses the resulting compression and provide the market increase to the remaining city employers, employees, and provide the market increase to the remaining city employers, employees, uh, who have not yet received it from the two thousand nineteen promise that we made. This plan, I think, should be presented for further consideration as part of mayor and council budget retreat. So I open it up for my colleagues on the council. If you'd like, um, to move, mayor. Thank you, Councilmember Santa Cruz. Um, I appreciate it.
Your honor.
Vice Mayor.
Your honor, I remember when we spoke about this about three years ago for the first time. And, uh, you know, when we looked at it, we, we knew it wasn't that big a budget hit. The problem was the compression part after the fact. And, uh, I have a motion that we, we pass and adopt item B tonight, but we also direct, with that motion, we direct staff to prepare, uh, documents for the retreat that addresses bumping this wage to fifteen dollars an hour and addressing the compa, the, the, the compression issues, uh, that follow with it. And, uh, that way they know that that's the, the direction that we're headed in. Um, I think it's a good compromise to, instead of springing it on them tonight, but, um, you know, this is a, this is a less than quarter million dollar, uh, hit to the budget. And moreover, um, and I have some experience with this. When you pay, pay people what they're worth, they have a little pride. And, uh, it changes the discussion. And right now, in my opinion, no one is worth less than fifteen dollars an hour. So let's do what we can on our end to, uh, to, to, to get this going. Again, um, I don't even think that, I don't even think the fifteen dollar minimum is the big problem of the discussion. I think the, the, the part, the bigger part of the discussion is the compression as we go up the line. So with that, I move that we pa, we pass and adopt item B from the consent with the caveat that staff prepares moving that minimum to fifteen dollars an hour in February and the compression issues, uh, that are connected with it. And I make that form of motion.
Thank you, mister, um, thank you, Vice Mayor. It's, it's pretty much the same thing. I, I did want to forward the item B, uh, but I wanted to make sure that, yes, um, a lot of us are working on this, on this fifteen dollars an hour issue. Um, yes, increase the minimum wage for city employees to fifteen dollar an hour. Yes, bringing it back for further consideration, which is what I asked to, uh, consider tonight. Um, make sure that we're addressing the compression issues, but I, I, I really want to make sure that in the motion, we provide the market increase to the remaining city employees who have not yet received it, that were promised it in two thousand nineteen. Um, and so that we, all of these particular elements of the motion be brought for further consideration by mayor and council at the budget retreat. So it's pretty much this, the same, the same motion.
So I have a point of clarification to the city clerk because I feel like we just got mansplained. How, but what is, you know, like, I, I moved whatever the mayor had put forward and then, um, Vice Mayor Cunningham came with another motion. How do we proceed at this moment?
As of right now, your honor, you don't have a motion on the table. Uh, you have two potential motions on the table, but neither one have been seconded, so there's not a motion to, to take at this point.
My bad, word one. I didn't hear your motion. I didn't hear you make the motion. I didn't hear you make the motion. That's totally my bad.
I think we can consolidate it. I think that, that we're saying pretty much the same thing. Um, and as, as long as we're, um, we're clear with the direction that we're giving mayor, um, the city manager. So. Councilmember Santa Cruz?
So, I mean, I can, again, move, move the motion and, um, and Vice Mayor, if you want a second, so we can, we're all on the same page.
Second.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Mr. Ortega?
Mayor, uh, thank you. Uh, just so that I'm clear on the motion, and I think I, I heard it correctly, fifteen dollars an hour, uh, Councilmember, Vice Mayor Cunningham mentioned the decompression caused by that. And then you also mentioned potentially, uh, some market adjustments for some folks that may have, may have been left out. Um, happy to do that. Um, what, what I will do, mayor, uh, and members of the council is for the retreat, I'll bring you, uh, some, some suggestions and maybe some strategies for how to address that. Um, I'm a little nervous about the timing for that. I think, uh, Councilmember, excuse me, Vice Mayor Cunningham mentioned February. Um, you know, what I, what I'd like to suggest is, let me work that out. Um, I've got some logistics to try to figure out. Um, and, you know, I would probably look at January, uh, as the, as the starting for some of that, and then also look at, uh, FY twenty-two, which would be July. So what I, what I'm seeing or envisioning is, once I get my arms around what you're asking here, uh, we'll run the numbers, we'll present those to you, and then come back with a, a game plan for you to consider as a part of the retreat discussion. So if that's okay, mayor, that's what I'm hearing. That's my plan to come back with the guidance that you've provided. Thank you.
Absolutely, that's absolutely correct, um, mister city manager, and that we have it in front of us at the, uh, mayor and council retreat and then hopefully with the possibility of, of instituting it in January. Any further discussion with, um, the motion? Ready? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Madam Mayor, can we have further discussion on this also at the retreat?
Yes, absolutely. This is, this is gonna absolutely be part of the discussion. Thank you so much. Mr. Clerk, what is the following item?
Next item is item E, your honor, real property approval of a ground lease with T-Mobile West Tower LLC for telecommunications facility at Rudy Garcia Park. This is pulled by Councilmember Fimbres.
Adam Mayor? I have a, like, we did, uh, about three weeks ago or two weeks ago, we, we pulled the items to have, uh, the things done to the park, similar, that would help them with the resources. And I have this motion, I move to approve this agenda item, but to have funds for the lease go to repairs and improvements for the lighting, irrigation, parking lot, fields and bathrooms at Rudy Garcia Park. In two thousand eleven, I made the motion to approve the cell tower that is in the Ward Five parking lot and have the precincts go to bring back the splash program to open city pools when we go out to the best, the worst recessions of the Great Depression. This proposal is beneficial to, for cell phone users, the city of Tucson, and will be the Ward Five residents who use Rudy Garcia Park. That's my motion.
Second, your honor.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Mr. Clerk?
That completes the consent agenda, your honor.
Thank you so much. Item eight.
Housing and community development, approving the Affordable Housing Impact Fee Waiver subsidy for River View Estates, Resolution Number Two Three Two Seven Five.
City manager's communication, number three nine zero, dated November seventeenth, is received into and made part of the record. Mr. Clerk, you are requested to read Resolution Two Three Two Seven Five by number and title only.
Resolution Number Two Three Two Seven Five, related to, relating to affordable housing, approving the River View Estates impact fee waiver request and declaring an emergency.
What is the council's pleasure?
Can I speak?
Yes, go ahead.
So sorry. Um, uh, so, you know, I'm super grateful for the leadership of the Housing and Community Development Department. Um, I know that mayor and council about a little over a year ago, um, designated a fund, um, for these fee waivers, um, because we knew it was important for us to be an important, you know, a critical partner in making sure that we're providing affordability. Um, so I, I know that it's, you know, sometimes we just, it, it's like another way to encourage alternatives to large-scale developments, you know, when we're trying to do infill projects, you know, within the city that are affordable. So, um, I think that with this investment in the Rio neighborhood, um, with the help of the Pima County Land Trust, we're getting affordable housing in a space that will, you know, help foster a, a lot of opportunity for folks during, during this time. So I just want to, um, thank y'all for having that foresight, um, and also show my support for, for this project.
Would you like to move the project?
Yes, that would make a motion to, um, move.
I'll second it to pass it and adopt Resolution Two Three Two Seven Five.
So there's a motion and a second. Um, any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Nick Santa Cruz?
Aye.
Mr. Cunningham?
Aye.
Mrs. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Fimbres?
Aye.
Mr. Kazachik?
Aye.
Mayor Romero?
Aye. Congratulations, and this is a great investment. Resolution Two Three Two Seven Five passes by a vote of six zero. Item nine?
Your honor, item nine has been continued at the request of staff.
Item ten?
Adjournment?
City council will stand adjourned. The next regularly scheduled meeting will be on Tuesday, December eighth at five thirty PM. Thank you all so much for, uh, your hard work today. It was a great, great day for mayor and council. Thank you all.
Thank you, your honor.
Have a nice Thanksgiving, everyone.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.